Spudge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. One nation, under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, Mary, did you, Mary Miller, did you get the email that I sent out? I know it was a longer list of things.
So if I could, I talked to Mary too. We both got the email and looked through it together and we decided we didn't quite know what you were referring to. So we both agreed to watch the video. So did you have time to watch the video, Mary? I did.
I did, yes.
You would think I would find an hour, but it's been quite busy. So, but so we watched the video, but we still want to know, similar to the policy one. Maybe, maybe the, and you can decide, John, since you're the chair, but how, what, what are, after a week later, what, what are you really wanting besides sort of additional continuing education about how things work? Where, where are your brains at in terms of what you want from us and from this committee?
Okay, well, I don't have as strong a financial background as Mary Miller does. But I do have a financial background and professional experience. And one of the things that I constantly had to do, and I know Mary Miller is having to do it, is you're having to explain to someone who doesn't know where the funding comes and goes. You're having to explain to them in a way that they can understand. And the way Mary Hernandez de Carl and I were talking about that is having categories assigned to the spend and income items. So that's what we talked about. And I know you've got some, Mary Miller, you've got some already, you've got them in there, but they're, you know, and I, and I think I mentioned this to you before, that the report showed, let me share the report. It, on some of them, it shows what it is, and on some of them, it's not available. So just because I think it just didn't get typed in, right?
Well, I think on what you were looking at, a lot of the stuff that, that you had questions on or you wanted us to do, we already do. And on that one in particular, if you had kept scrolling past the balance sheet, the next report is the monthly report. And that is all of the monthly spend by category.
Okay, but the, the way they are, they're kind of, so here, here's where I'm going with this. And I'll share a screen here in a second, once I get it. Well, why don't I just go ahead and share a screen and then you can see as I'm navigating. Let's see if it lets me share the window. And we share this, and we share. Okay, so you guys should see what I'm saying. And if I go to.
Oh, did we lose him?
I think so.
He'll be back. I don't.
Hopefully he'll figure it out. I don't have any per, way to, I don't know if you can communicate with, if you know him well enough to have a phone number or something, Mary. But he'll figure it out, I guess. I could email him.
Yeah.
Come back, how are you, Mary? You doing, I mean, my Mary, I talked to, actually, I didn't talk to you today, Mary from the library. But how are you doing, okay, Mary? This is all obviously public and recorded, but in general terms, you doing okay?
Oh, life is great. We have family in town, which is always considering that, that we don't get to see them as often as we would like. And my kids have, they're reaching a big milestone this, this, tomorrow, actually, I was gonna say this coming Saturday. They have their culminating concert for their three-year music program.
Oh, you're talking about, that sounds so cool. Anyway, we can talk about that another time.
Yes.
We're glad you're back.
Yeah, so it was weird. I went to go share my window and then it dropped out of the call. But any case, let me go to, I'm just gonna share then the screen, Christian County Library Board Packet. Share. It just seems to like that better when you only share that thing. So here's what we're looking at. Clearall, escape. So I should be able to scroll down. This is so annoying with Google. I don't remember doing this when. And that others, stop annotating. There we go. Let's see if I can scroll down. It's so weird. It, it's treating it like I'm here annotating and that's not what I want. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, yes.
So let's get down to the report. Here, here's what we're, I'm kind of thinking, and Mary Hernandez de Carl, you tell me if I am also talking what you wanted to talk about with regard to, this is not it. There is a report that you have. Let me go back. Trustee. Let's look at this one, because it's, it's not as.
It should be in the first couple pages, just right in the.
Yeah, here, here, well, the one that I'm looking at.
It's in special meetings instead of.
Yeah, the February meeting, I'm looking at my binder and I have a paper copy, I think of what you're talking.
No, I think you were looking at the, the special meetings. You gotta scroll up to, scroll up to the regular meetings, because those were for the, that's why it's just, that makes sense. Those were just the ones to get your executive director, that's why you kept getting those.
Right, right, right. Yeah, the special meetings don't have any finance in them.
Right, yes, yes.
Uh, let me go like this, let me go. Christian County Library. And Board of Trustees. And then I go to trustee packet, let's look at February. Okay, there it is. Let me share this. Okay. Let me know if you can see this now. Can you see my, see my screen? So the, the report we're kind of looking for is something like this that has the, the item payee, the dollar amount, and have the category as a column. That's kind of what we're looking for, Mary. I don't know if.
I, I wish I could, and, and I can't, and I'll tell you why we have to do two separate reports. Because it can be done for something like, oh, Chuck Mercer. He does Tai Chi, I think, or something. He's one of our programmers. And that's all it would be, programming. But for something like Baker &amp; Taylor Books, that could be adult books, that could be children's books, that could be audio visual. And I don't mean either or, I mean, it could be all of those things. And credit card could be all of the categories. Do you see why we can't represent it as just a column?
Right.
So I offer it as by vendor. Here, you have it by vendor. And if you scroll down to the monthly report, that's by category.
Yeah, I wish I could figure out, let me see how I do this.
So i- if that's the case, Mary, then how do you properly deduct funds for each of the different categories? Like going back to the book example, where some of the books may be youth books, others might be adult books. How does that look on your end?
So when we get a bill, it will be itemized by what items are in it. And when we go to enter that into QuickBooks, we can enter almost unlimited categories per vendor. So we just have to type in each one individually.
Okay, is the printout that we see, is that generated by QuickBooks?
This one right here?
Yes.
No, this is Excel.
Okay. Well, would it be possible to print out those reports from QuickBooks and scan them into PDF? And upload them every month?
No, I, that's.
No, it's gonna be pages and pages long.
Is it really?
And I don't mean 15, I mean like hundreds of pages long. Because there's additional, there's some bills like Baker &amp; Taylor, where we buy books. When, when my clerk enters that, she enters each book separately. So we, if we need to do a search of a book that we bought, for whatever reason, Sunshine Requests, or we, we thought we'd bought one and we don't see it, or it's showing in our catalog and we don't see where we spent it, we have to be able to search. And we could have a single bill that's 20 lines long, 50 lines long, just depending on how many books we bought on that bill.
So here's, here's where I'm going with this, Mary Miller. So you have, what is the data that is entered into QuickBooks? By line item? Is it, so you have the payee, you have the dollar amount. And you have some kind of category, right?
Yes, so it's gonna be, depending on what it is, it's gonna be book or audio visual, programming, whatever the category is, and then the subcategory is gonna be adult or youth.
Okay, so here's, I think you're getting us very close, if not where we wanted to be. So that being said, if you did a QuickBooks export into an Excel spreadsheet, and I, you know, I can try to amaze you guys with my pivot tables and all that. But I don't want to do that. What I think we could do is take the raw data as an Excel spreadsheet and make that available. I, I would want to pilot this first, but make that data available so that patrons can go. And yes, it's not the $30,000 software that does all the whiz bang stuff that the commissioners have. But it at least allows us to group the data. And it would be, in my opinion, it would be very little effort for you, Mary Miller, to pull this out as a raw data file, CSV, with the categories like we just talked about, personnel, I'm sorry, the, the, the category or the payee, not, you know, where, where that money was going, the dollar amount, the date it was gone out, and what the category and subcategory are as a raw file. I, I'm pretty certain QuickBooks can do that. I've had, I've had QuickBooks myself. Is that a maybe, yes, no, Mary?
Can it be done? Yes. Can we post it? No, not without me spending hours grooming it every month to take out all the confidential information. Because underneath all of this is personnel data, who has health insurance, who's canceled health insurance, are all of our legal bills, which we enter by, you know, we put the detail of all the bill in there. There's just a lot of confidential information that I can't, I would have to groom out of it every month. And that's just.
Well, also, I, I think there, I mean, I don't know, I think there's something potentially problematic about putting, are you suggesting like posting an editable file? I mean, I know people can, because I think the idea is with the board packets is, and information that we present to the public, this is not for board members necessarily, but for, for public use. I mean, you don't want someone to easily be able to change what it says and then say that that's what the library says they're spending. Do you see what I mean? Like, the PDF is utilitarian, because it's a record of us saying like, this is, this is, this is what the library is spending. Like, you want to be able to have that as a, I would think. That's why, and I know, I know in the call you said you didn't want to spend it, but I really think in turn, number one, I think we support the goal of transparency. It's fantastic, okay? Number two, the easiest suggestion I heard in that call that could be done, and I think, Mary, I loved your, I loved how you started with what problem are we trying to solve? And at least I heard, and maybe I should pause to see, I'm assuming that it is that you would like the financial records to be more transparent. Is that, did I hear that right, you guys?
Yes, because there's just, uh, uh, I, I, it would be great to be able to, you know, just understand, you know, how the money is spent. Especially like when you have categories like programming and then programming supplies. Well, what's the difference? You know, and, and we can, you know.
To me, though, it's, it's just a, maybe some more education and not necessarily a change to how we're doing things.
So that's where, and I go back to kind of, like my suggestion to Echo in that other meeting. So there are a few ways we could do more in-depth education so that people could re, I mean, we are a library, right? We do educational seminars all the time. So we could consider for wide public use, doing a series of, here's, here's how to look at different reports on the website and what they mean about how the library spends money, if that's something that you think is a program that people would come to. And we could kind of explain some of these forms. For the board itself, in terms of board education, that's something that we have not done with this new board, but we have done in the past, like I kind of explained, we had an entire full eight-hour day on electronic resources, how they work, how they're charged, or what the options are, what the legal landscape of, of how publishers charge and like advocacy around changing some of those models on a national level, how much we spend, why we spend it that way, et cetera. Because that was one thing that Renee was a super, super expert on. And so she was our presenter and she brought in outside people. And so like, that was a whole board retreat seminar just on that one topic. And those, of course, have to be publicly noticed. At that time, we didn't have anyone that came besides trustees, because it's sort of like a board retreat. But certainly the public could attend something like that. It would just be, I mean, it's not something we can arrange like next week. That would take, you know, probably a couple months of planning to make sure we got it all set up and got food and found a location and, you know, I mean, that's something we could do here, or maybe even do at a school auditorium, or rent out the OC or something and do, you know, kind of wider kind of public education about, about those things. But in terms of being able to look at, like I know, John, in the meeting, you, you screenshotted the actual bank account. I mean, there are some, even though it's all public information, actually having people look at our banking page is not really, there are some privacy issues there. I think, and I'm assuming that's why the county, that's why I was super interested when the county did their thing. And that's why I know about that, because I proactively, after a county meeting like a year and a half ago, told Renee about it, and I went and talked to Amy Dent and had a whole meeting about her, because she's the one, the auditor for the county who implemented their system. And it is amazing. I mean, it generates reports, you can see all the checks as they're done. The transparency is great. And I'm the one that mentioned the $30,000, I think that was around, I can't, I honestly can't remember, but it was something to that. And right now, we pay zero, right? But that is something that this group could again, talk to the new director. And if it is prioritized as something that you guys think is worthy of kind of moving around, displacing, reserving a chunk of budget money, not in this budget this year, but starting now to have, you know, maybe, you know, Mary and I and whomever start to research what some of these options are. I think those softwares are built specifically for public entities so that there's a backend. Of course, you have to find one that's compatible with your vendors. Like, if you find one that doesn't work with QuickBooks, then it's sort of like changing our ILS system, you know, or our interlibrary loan, like they all have to talk to each other. So that limits the options. But I'm guessing, I don't know, but I'm guessing if, if the county did it, there must be one or two or a few options, kind of researching what those look like. And like I said, when I mentioned that $30,000, she did say that that was kind of like prorated by size and type of entity. So we could get a quote from that company, you know, try to figure out like, you know, is this something that they do for libraries? How much would it cost for our library? You know, start the process, because again, it would be sort of like when we were looking at any new kind of entity, like that would for sure be a purchase, well, if it was over $30,000, it would have to go to the board for approval. But even if it wasn't, since you're bringing it to the table, I think that's something that any executive director, even if it's below the threshold where they have to get explicit board approval, is gonna want to bring, you know, quotes to you, talk about the different features, since it's something that you're initiating. Have you guys make decisions in the course of several public, you know, probably regular meetings. But if you're really interested, you know, even you can call extra meetings at some point, once that person is here to talk about it, and kind of figure out what that cost is, so that when the new director and you guys and Mary are building the budget for next year, which, to be clear, the, the sequence of this, and I've talked to Mary too, but like, right now, we're about to, you guys have to approve benefits packages, right after that, like the next week is audit prep. Audit prep takes almost a month. Mary starts meeting with our auditor. We have to share everything. Like, I know Mary mentioned credit card, I mean, everything, all the receipts. Not only that, in a public entity, she has to read every board meeting packet. She has to read every set of board minutes. She has to read all the foundation minutes and their, and their stuff, because they, five years, well, it hasn't been five years. We might eventually be able to take them off. But five years ago, they gave us a donation that's over 5% of our income. And there's a federal IRS law that governs if a public entity has a donor that gives more than that, a donor organization, then that has to be included, they're included in our audit every year right now. The friends have never given us that much. I think they wish they could, so do we. But if they do, they'll be included too. But she has a huge job, I mean, that audit takes easily three months of Mary's life. And that's right at benefits time, right? So she's doing audit benefits. And then we can't really always start the final budget process for the next year until after the tax levy rate is set. And the director will not get that information from the county until early August. Those calculations have to be made, that has to be posted and voted on. And then once that's set at the end of August, is when we basically, you know, then the timeline, like, there's not a lot of flexibility in the timeline. That's why the budget meeting with the board is in October, because basically September is spent taking whatever we, was approved for the budget. So we have pretty good estimate of what's coming from property taxes and kind of funneling that into the new system. And then bringing the first draft budget discussions, which Renee always did in October, and then bringing the final budget, if that makes sense, in November, so that then everybody has time to. So that's kind of like the flow of how this works. But, I mean, it would be an additional project that would take us time. But if our task is just to kind of look through for some software options that definitely would cost money, but if you prioritize it, I mean, it might mean that we don't, you know, that, that we have, we'll have to pick a category to recommend to the board that we take money out of in order to prioritize the software. But if it's something that you guys really want the library to do, it seems like those softwares, I'm assuming, come with the protections that we're talking about, that we're not gonna have if we're just posting raw Excel sheets. And honestly, I don't find, what they also do is, they make, I don't think like a raw Excel sheet with every expenditure is gonna be easier for the public to read than this. I think that's gonna be.
Yeah, this has no categories in it, so it's, it's not easy for anyone. And I would say that as the treasurer, it's not easy for me. I know what a lot of these things are.
Yeah.
But there's.
Monthly report, that's where the categories are.
Right, so.
Companion.
Can I ask you, Mary, so for this particular one, anticipated bills, you have who the payee is, what the dollar amount is. It, did you create this from Excel? What, where did it come from?
That's from QuickBooks.
Okay, so if QuickBooks could just add, you, you could add the category of what that thing is into this.
More than one category. That's what I was explaining before.
So how, so what would that look like? If you generated that report as a three-column with category, or even a four-column, category, subcategory? What would that look like? Can you do that?
It would be, let's take credit card, for example. It would be credit card at the, at the top, and then blank spaces for about 30 lines with 30 categories for the credit cards, because they buy basically a little of everything on a credit card.
But isn't credit card a aggregated item?
Yes, that's what I mean.
So then just.
And have it on one report, I'm gonna have to put a whole bunch of different categories.
No, for, well, so for credit card, that would maybe be an exception to having a single category. How many exceptions to having a single category do you think we have?
On the utilities, maybe?
Right. Can we try?
That's not true either, because our utilities are broken down between gas, electric, and water.
Can you try?
Those have three categories.
Mary, Mary Miller, can you try it? And let's see what it looks like. I mean, we don't have to share it, you can email it to us and we can look at it so that we're not, I, I don't, I, I understand what you're saying, there's sensitivity of the information, I don't, we don't need to know who's.
I'm not talking about sensitivity.
Here's the thing. The library has a $4 million budget. There are a lot of questions that I get asked regarding how money is being spent. And I'm assuming that's the same for the other Board of Trustees. And, you know, I, I agree with John, let's see how many vendors there are that we charge, that deduct their, their funding from different categories and, and see what that looks like. It would be very helpful if, when you look at the annual budget, because the board has to approve the budget. The board should be familiar with who the vendors are. And when you're talking about like what consortia is, you know, we should understand which vendors are gonna be, you know, you're gonna deal with that, whose expenses fall under that category and what kind of services are provided to that, because, you know.
Saying on, it pulls out basically to a fancy Excel spreadsheet, which is all that QuickBooks is. And it's one line, but when we have more than one category, how do I fit that on one line?
Well, can you run a report and we can see what it looks like? Because I think transparency is a problem. I really do. I'd like to, I mean, I'm not the only one, we want to see.
I'm not trying to like argue with you, because I don't want to do it. I don't see how, I mean, and in, in QuickBooks, I can probably drill down on this. But then for every vendor, we're gonna have a separate page.
Can we try it, Mary? Look, I've, I've done spreadsheets that really, they hit the limit of what Excel will even allow for line items. So I, I'm not afraid of.
I'm saying, do I just, would you like me to just repeat it, like ADT? Well, that's a bad one, because it's actually a single one. But Amazon Capital, where we might have office supplies and programming supplies. Do you want me to just repeat Amazon Capital for every category?
No, what, what I would do, well, here's what I would say. And we don't need to do it on this call, because it's, it's basically data filtering and sorting and that kind of thing. Get me the raw file, remove, just for this one-time exercise, because I want to see what, what's available, what, what we can do. And then we can, we can see what's possible. That's, I think that's where we start, what's possible with.
But I think, so John, here's my question. What, are you trying to change what, what you see monthly? Are you trying to make it, because I feel like we're talking about two different things here. I mean, if you want a system in place, I think the way to do that is not to try and manually sort a ton more, trust me, Mary's department, and I'm, I'm only in this seat for a short period of time. We're all very busy in administrative staff, as you've seen, because you've lost your main administrative officer. And then, you know, the backup to that person, you've also lost. And so I'm the only other backup. And that's because the library is designed to run lean on administration, like most good nonprofits, because you want to put most of the taxpayer money not into administrators, but into the patron services, right? Books and programs and stuff for patrons. So, you know, we, we try to wear multiple hats. We also try to not unnecessarily have backups and replicate services on the, on the backend, because that's just paying administrators who, and you get very little public good for that, right?
Sure.
Well, I just, just quickly, I want to say Mary's department is overrun, because she has not only all the financial stuff, right, but she also has, you know, at the, at the direction of the executive director, all of the HR stuff. And those are two huge jobs. So, I mean, hopefully, one day, the district will grow big enough in budget that we can hire two separate people for that. But right now, it's just Mary and one part-time staff person for each of those roles. So like, when I say that she is at max capacity, I mean, total, like, any new regular monthly process that causes extra work of any sort is going to really be complicated to, to achieve without hiring another complete, like a whole new person to do that. However, I think your idea of getting something like, I mean, that would also cost money, but getting something and that would take time. And so that's why it would take time, because she has to fit in researching that. But she can have some of her staff and other people in the, you know, the research can be done by others that isn't her. And then it would be her helping the implementation, so that would be several months. And then it would be her helping the implementation. So that would be several months of trying to figure out when she has time to implement that, but. We just got a new payroll program a couple of years ago, and that was a difficult process, but we did it, right? So I think that could be done. And then that way, all of those things are feeding into something that the public could see. That once it's implemented, doesn't hopefully require too much more work from her, or it's the type of process where. There are certain files that that program requires are downloaded and uploaded into their system. But Mary doesn't have to go like line by line every month adding more. Data, does that make sense?
Report just that it doesn't have vendor names?
I think the concern is that it. The concern is the, so how much time do you spend on this report right now? To put this together?
This one right here?
Yeah.
Like the monthly board reports in the packet, the monthly board reports in the packet.
I mean, it's hard to say, I mean, because they all build together, but. It depends on the month, some month I can, depending on when the meeting is, the earlier the meeting, the more. Manual entries I have to do. It could be anywhere from two hours to a whole day.
Now, I have a question then.
But I guess my only. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mary. I, my only question is, is. The only problem with the monthly report that it doesn't have vendor names associated with it.
Now, would it be possible? If John or myself could go in and with you and click around and help you. Brainstorm a way to be able to run a report? I'm familiar with QuickBooks. John is a lot, you being the tech guy, you know a lot more than I do. Is that a possibility? Because we're not trying to be difficult here or create. Uh, you know, hours of work, but there's got to be a way to use what we have. For the time being, to be able to. Get a little bit more information on the monthly reports that we receive.
What I think too, and this is not trying to be, and I think we are still trying to really understand what type of. Now, I mean, I know you're saying more, but do you just mean like? Like she's saying, do you just need vendor names? Do you just, I mean. In the past trustees have basically like we've kind of told you in, in the orientation and also in the board meetings that. Over time, whoever serves as the treasurer. And the board members themselves, they start to become familiar with. You know, like you said consortium, you know what that means, like that is what, that's only one vendor, isn't it, Mary? The consortium or do we pay?
Um, Springfield Green.
Yeah, so that's, that's our ILS system, right? That's because that is actually, you know, a joint contract with Springfield Green that, that, that's Sierra, right? So like, and that is something that as you become, especially in those trust, treasurer seats. That's why I don't think, John, have you ever had time to come in and really do a training on that? I know we've offered it. Has that, I don't know, because I wasn't.
I never got it. I, I don't know when you offered it to me. I must have not been paying attention, but.
Oh, I think Mary has multiple times sent it. I just didn't know if it actually happened because I wasn't, that was when Renee was around. Mary, have you?
I've, I'm constantly offering to provide any answers that they want or additional training.
Well, I mean, we could start again, if you think Mary that the whole, you know, Mary Hernandez de Carl, if you feel like the whole board wants to hear that. We could do a more in-depth training with the whole board and kind of go through. Where Mary talks through, I mean, again, we'd have to set that, not this week or next week, but you know, a couple of weeks out so that she has time to prepare. And we could do something like go through all the vendors so you guys can take notes. And kind of figure out what is what. Obviously we can tape that so that the public can watch it also. And that they can kind of talk through, like here are the categories. We can go through several months of board reports where. You see a lot of, you know, like here are the names you're going to see. Here are the names on the checks. Here's what they mean. Um, this year you might remember when Renee did her. Final budget proposal, she gave you a sheet that kind of talked through the categories in the budget and what was included in each category.
Tori, you're kind of getting away from what we would ask for.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must not be understanding, but I'm saying like we could educate you on those things. In a way that you would know what you're looking at. Um.
But we want to. Well, so there's two audiences here, probably three. Um, one, one is the board and the other one is the general public and I don't expect the general public to go through all those trainings and stuff. They should be able to. Um, be able to self-serve. So we're, so I think step one is for the board to understand. Here's what I would say to you, Mary, I'm, I'm the treasurer. And if you're spending a full day on this report. I would say you're wasting your time. Because it's not as helpful as it could be. And, and I appreciate the work you're doing and, and I know what you're trying to do and it, and it's not that it's of no use. It's just not as useful as it needs to be for us.
I'm not spending it on this one report. I'm spending it on the financial packet for the board.
Okay.
And also.
And these are required statutorily, so.
Yeah, just to, well, by policy, by policy, this is a board policy. And there states that, you can talk about the statute. I will say that the policy. Uh, previous boards have required for transparency purposes. That monthly you approve by a majority vote. The last month's, um, you know, uh, last month's expenditures. And projected expenditures for the, and that's, that part was not required. What's, what's the statute you think you're referring to, Mary? Is that another layer?
Um, the statute requires the actual bills so that they can approve them.
Uh huh.
The anticipated bills is not required. We, that was added by policy. The monthly report and the balance sheet.
And then we also added in the quarterly updates, which is coming this quarter too. That was something that Renee added. To give a little bit more.
Voluntarily.
Yeah, that was just kind of like, so actually Matthew, I think back then, because he was a banker, he wanted to see. I think he requested it initially and Renee said, sure, it's a little more work for Mary, but that way. Four times a year, you can see how the big picture looks compared to the budgeted amount.
The, the problem is guys, and I think we're missing this. I don't know the exact statute is. But we also need to know what the amount spent was for. That's why we kind of were leaning towards categories, but we need to know what it was for.
But I don't. The report.
It's not, it, I can't tell from this sheet that I'm looking at what.
You're looking at the wrong sheet. Scroll down to one of the last reports.
So like this one, keep going. This, no.
Nope, keep going. Keep going. Keep going. And there it is.
So it's, why don't you talk through this a little bit, Mary? Just. As if, as if you're walking through from scratch, how, how this shows how, how it was spent.
Okay, so this shows all the incomes that we had at the very top. So we got by category, so we've got items we've sold, which I think are just the cups, though we still have.
I knew we had some, I didn't know we had any left, yeah.
Um, and then as you scroll down, all those are the expenses that we paid to those vendors. By category, so, and I even leave the detail of youth or adult. So we have all the audio visual, which is going to be. DVDs and CDs. And then we have books, which are the hard copies of books by youth. Electronic. Collection is like Hoopla, that's, um, that we pay a service for. Adult books are actually hard copies of books, physical books that we buy.
Right, this is, this is not.
So this is for the same time period. But it doesn't. Above and the categories are below.
You see, but you see, what, what we lost in this report is who the vendor is, so.
There's going to be multiple vendors for each category.
Oh yeah, I mean, Hoopla is one, Hoopla and Overdrive is our two vendors, but everybody else, it's going to be multiple, you know. There'll be Amazon, Baker and Taylor, you know, there'll be all the book distributors.
I, I get that, but, but what we're, so we got this, but we don't. We don't have it backed up, so I can't tell by vendor. And we're, here's what's happening. You're asking us to approve a budget. Here, without the line item granularity that I would want to know who, who am I paying for, for the adult books? Who, 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 who's, where's that come from? Who, I, is it going to an adult bookstore? I mean, I don't know.
You have the vendors.
So the vendors are on the other.
If it were an adult bookstore, you would have seen it in the checks or in the one above.
So where, I can't, I can't connect the dots between this and what you have as a rollup below, right?
Well, I have a question. Would it be possible? Because if you, for you to. List. And it doesn't, for right now, it doesn't have to be like an itemized list, but can you create? A key for us, Mary? One where it says who the vendors are, just the names, no dollar amounts need to be. Uh, listed, but.
So like vendor by category?
Yes, a vendor by category. So we'll understand that Amazon might appear under multiple categories, but for the time being. Is that a document that's possible to make? And that can just be a legend, that little sheet can be attached to every, it could be one of the pages that's attached. Or just, you know, to each budget report, or if you just want to give, you know, one copy to us so that we have it as a reference. But just so that we have that as a starting point, so. Um, you know, we can at least have an idea of who the vendors are. That, uh, pertain to each category.
With time, yeah.
I really think.
It'll take time.
Mary, I think we're really overthinking this.
No, no, I mean, we're just, it's a document that's going to have to be created.
Yeah, it's an export. It's, Mary, it's just.
No, it's not. I think what she's saying is it's not an export. She'll have to, now she can. That is something that her brain will be needed, but she can work with her assistants too, who obviously are all. Using up every ounce of their time, but they could try to over the, you know, next couple of weeks or months, like write down. Like, okay, let's make a list of vendors and write down, because that, and it may, I mean, with the caveat that there might be some she doesn't think of right away, because you know, they pop up here and there. But they could try to go through, I say, you're saying by.
I don't think it takes, yeah, I don't think this is going to take a long time. This is something that I've done myself in a professional capacity before. I mean, because this is very important to us. I mean, we.
I mean, I think we have a lot of vendors though, I mean.
I, I understand that, but I mean, we can at least, I think, have a can-do attitude that this is something that we can, we can. Carve out an hour or two for, so that we can have that in preparation for the next budget subcommittee.
I don't think it's an hour or two, I mean, and I'm not trying to say it can't be done. I think it's a can-do attitude. I don't think it's an hour or two project.
If you want me to just spend an hour, I can throw a category that I know we've put to that vendor before and do that in an hour or two.
Wait, explain that. I don't understand what you mean. Maybe they do, but.
If they want me to take each vendor and off the top of my head, throw a category in a. Column next to it that I know we've used for that vendor before. I could do that in an hour or two.
And then just kind of sort it.
If they're, no, it'll just have one category by each vendor.
Well, right, then we could sort, but if we did it in a spreadsheet, then we could sort it by, you know, um, program supplies or something, and then you would see the ones that were off the top of your head for program. I mean, it wouldn't be. Like a, and something for the audit or for publication.
No, it's just a way to, so here's, here's what we're really wanting to look at. We're, we're trying to size and scope. The data and we can't do that because you're not giving us a raw data file. That's, that's what I've asked for, a raw data file. Go into QuickBooks. Pick a date parameter, say January to February. And export all the available data fields and see what it looks like in terms of, um, ability to filter pivot. And, and work with the data. Once we see what needs to be cleaned up, Mary, we can, we can talk about that. I'm not asking you to do any work. Except to do a file export from QuickBooks with available, available data fields. This is really database 101. Just if you could do that, it would be hugely helpful. Mary?
I mean.
We'll have to look at what we, we can pull again.
Yeah, Mary, why don't you and I look at it again? Okay, so I just want to talk about realistic timelines for Mary though, because.
Okay, before you promise any timelines, remember I have open enrollment coming up.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I want to make again, very clear, okay? Mary has a bunch, not only that, we have new executive director coming hopefully, so there's hiring procedures coming up.
Two weeks out, Tori, I, I think two weeks. And then the other thing is just to reiterate what I said. This is a.
Wait, what? I'm sorry, what do you think, what is two weeks for, for her to do?
Two weeks, two weeks before we meet again, so. Right?
Um. I mean, she has to meet right now and then start the, we have to do board reports next week for the 20 second meeting, because we got to get those, remember to you seven days. In advance, so she has to start doing that next week. She's still meeting with benefits providers to get the final plan. She has to do workshops with all of the staff. To make sure that they know what the benefits options are. She has to prepare information for the board, so you guys can approve the. Plan, like I'm just saying, this month, and then we're starting to meet with the auditor, like in a week or two. So, and that is a, an all kinds, now I think it's something that could be done in that process, but I do not think two weeks is a reasonable. Uh, timeline, um.
Well, here's, here's what I know about database and data exports. It's not a two week.
Oh, I'm talking about the categories.
No, no, I don't, I didn't, I don't ask for that. I want to know. I think we need to know what's in there now. And, and that the way we do that is just a simple data export into a, into a flat, a flat file. Flat file meaning it's columns of data.
Uh huh.
And record items. And just, if you could just get me that, I, I would be doing cartwheels.
Um. I mean, again, I don't, we can look at it and see, like she said, I don't, I really don't know how much of it would have to be sorted through if any. Financial information is public, but there is. HR information, you know, threaded through there, so we'd have to exclude some of that. Um, but I, I don't know. I don't know enough about how that looks on the backend.
So Mary, do you have PII for people in your QuickBooks database?
We have what?
Do you have personal identity information?
Yes.
Books, you do? Wow. Okay, so that's going to have to get excluded, probably is that bamboo or whoever the vendor is for that, right? Or, or your benefits provider.
And, and our benefits providers.
Okay, so that's two vendors that you're going to be filtering out. Other than that. What do you figure? An hour? To do the export and pull the two.
What, you just want it for like a, a week or something? I don't, I don't, I still don't quite understand what you're asking her to download.
I'm asking her to export. All, all of the non-PII data from January and February. To see what we have available to run reports. And, and, and Mary, I think you'll be happy, I, I can help you with this. Once I get done with it, I can macro the whole thing. So you do export, click a button and your report is done presto. I mean, it, it's really that simple. Um, but I need to have the raw data minus PII. So that I can see what's possible.
Okay, how about this? So did we agree at the beginning timeline wise that you do not want to meet next week? You want to try and meet on the, that's the week after the board meeting, right? The, or of the board meeting on the 24th, is that what we're, or 25th? Is that a day that everyone can do?
I think so. I think that works.
Um, that's a Friday, that Mary is that, that's what he was proposing for the policy committee that we switch the meeting. That's now scheduled for the 10th to the 24th, so can, um, I can, how about you, Mary Miller? Do you have anything on the 25th?
Let me see.
Because that actually is. That's three weeks. I mean, we do have board reports and, but she's going to have to get the. The presentation on benefits for you guys to approve, which luckily it looks like it'll be probably about the same, but. Um, so there won't be a lot to do, uh, to decide, to do there will be, but not to decide. Um. And maybe she can get that, she and I can kind of see what that looks like. And then we can come and show you during the call and kind of figure out. I mean, I don't want to get in a situation where one trustee is working in the finance department. I know you're trying to be helpful, but I'm saying like we don't want a monthly situation where you're creating board reports from financial data. Because then we would need to have you get it as an employee, if that makes.
No, what, what doesn't make sense is having. A work product that takes a long time and is not helpful to the board, so.
Okay, well, yes, that is not helpful to, that, that you are not finding helpful, let's say.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know anyone that is finding it helpful. I mean, if I were to transfer. The, the treasurer duties to someone else right now, they would have the same difficulty that I'm having, I'm fairly certain.
Well, I mean, and this is not to disparage you, but over time, like I said, all the other treasurers have felt like they had a handle on it, including the investment banker. So I don't, I mean, I think it, it's okay if you don't understand it, and I don't think that's. A bad thing, but I think you can't assume no one else. a bad thing, but I think you can't assume no one else understands it.
No, I don't, I mean, i- it's, it's, it it would be, it, to me, it also seems incomplete. It, it's just incomplete. I mean, I can understand that, that, that bills are being paid to Zubin, but I don't understand what category that is. It would be helpful. I- i- it's just a matter of being accommodating to wanting to get a, a deeper understanding, because we have to keep in mind that the board approves the budget. We should understand what the executive director is proposing each year, and I think a- a- at this point, I mean, if I was on the board when this budget was proposed, I would have asked for more information, because i- i- it's, it's unclear.
Sure, and luckily you're new.
When we're talking about budget, that's a completely different conversation than the monthly reports. Because when we do go over the budget, we go over every vendor and how often we pay them, what our average payment to them is, what category it's in. That is something that we look at.
And that's something that is led by the executive director, not by Mary. Mary is the assistant in the budget process, not the driver of that process. So that's when the library's new executive director is hired, that's a process that they will have to do internally with Mary. That's what I'm saying, like, that would be a library employee. That person is working with Mary to figure out what those are, and maybe that is the moment, because we will have a training moment, and that'll be right, I mean, the person, hopefully you'll be able to hire someone that starts in May or June at the latest. And that person then will be able to, um, you know, because even the, obviously the interviews will take a couple of weeks, and then most people have other jobs they would have to give notice at before they would come work here, so hopefully by May or June, they'll be here. And then that person, that'll be right around when Mary is at the climax of the um, the audit process and finishing that up, so that's perfect timing, so they can see the tail end of that and really understand the big picture stuff, and how intense that process is. And then Mary, well, it's perfect timing, honestly, for a director turnover, because then Mary can work with the new director to have them understand going through, and that would be a perfect time to do a more complete version of what I do think Mary could be done in terms of making this kind of off the top of the head list of categories. I think that is something that, you know, I mean, I don't want to promise for you, Mary, that, that within three weeks, you could write those things down and maybe even have, you know, have
I could probably call, which they've asked for anyway, I could probably pull up the one that we used for the last budget.
Right, so do something like that, make sure that it's pretty much there and bring that, you know, give that for the next budget meeting, so you guys can look at that. But then work, work with the new executive director as you're going through that early budget process, like right, again, that starts right after the audit in July, and then by the time you get the money, the money you know you're going to have in August, then you kind of have already started thinking through what next year might look like, and then you have the money to map it on, right? Um, if you guys are interested, I really say again, in some of those softwares, again, it's not going to be $30,000 for, even for that one, like I explained, Amy Dent said it was prorated, and the county is way bigger than the library budget wise. So it would be less, I don't know how much, but we could start the process, because that's not going to be overnight of looking around at what companies and what costs, because if you want that in next year's budget as an item, we would need to have an idea in the next couple of months, and it'll take a couple of months to kind of review options and have the board decide which one they might want. Um, so like, I think the, there are a few things that could happen that I think, so Mary's saying she can try to take like the budget categories and kind of make a list for you for the next, whatever we decide tonight is the next meeting. Um, maybe if it's okay with you guys, Mary and I can look at what it looks like to download raw data. It just seems like I don't, I feel like that's less of an explanation. That just widens the amount of information and detail that you're likely to get confused.
Well, let's, let's
I think, and I think we're, we're trying to make processes for a problem we don't have. If we really look at what we're trying to accomplish here, that's not what, what we're doing. If we're worried about the budget, we need to look at the budget categories that we look at.
Well, I think
And there's also going to be another step, too, if we want to put these online. We're currently using QuickBooks desktop, which is not supported anymore, and we don't pay anything for, so included in that, we need to keep in mind that we'll have to upgrade to QuickBooks online.
I see, yeah. So we could think about putting that at least in the budget for next year.
Right.
Definitely do that, and so I am not hearing a commitment to getting me a raw data file minus PII data. Is there a commitment to get that to me?
I, I don't know enough about it. Is that possible, Mary? I don't, do you want to just look at that with me and see if we can get that by the next meeting?
I can. I'm not sure what we're accomplishing, but.
You're accomplishing Remember, there's data missing in the reports such that we can connect line item as it contributes to a category. So let me have the data, and I will do my analysis, and I will, I will come back to you with, with my analysis.
But I think, are, what categories are you using? Because I think here's the disconnect for me, is that I don't think the categories are going to map out to be budget, the same categories as the budget necessarily, like that's
We don't, we don't know that.
Like bill pay, we do know that, right? Like the bill paying categories are what are available for that, that is not necessarily the same thing as budget item categories.
So once, I, I don't want to get into the mechanics of doing data analysis, but just give me the raw data and I'll show you what can be done. If you get me the raw data minus PII, I'll show you what can be done. Now, do we have a commitment to get that to me within a week?
I mean, I just don't even know what that means, so I, it's going to have to be up to Mary whether she can do it um, and, and in what time period. I don't, it's not something I have the technical expertise to be able to do.
I can walk her through it if she wants help, Mary.
I, it's not that I don't know how to do it. I know that there's information that needs to come out of there. I also don't know what my benefit meetings look like yet for next week. And I can do a pivot table, that's not what I'm saying, I just I, I think we're, I don't know, we're not answering, we started off the meeting with what what question are we trying to answer, and I get that you want categories, but it's not going to be this report with categories out to the side. If you've used QuickBooks, you know that.
So I mean, are we, are you trying to look at the, the budget? I, I, I still, I also think we're having a, a part of the problem here is we're having multiple conversations, you know, about different things. So like, there's the budget, and then there's the monthly expenditures, right?
I think
Which are approved.
Say it a different way, but I think the problem statement is, we can't connect line items to categories if they contribute in the rollup report. I think
So can you give a, can you just, so that may, I, I really, I'm not trying to be dense here, but can you give me an example from what you're talking about here? Like, name one of these things. I know you kind of started to do that, but go ahead and name one that you don't understand.
It's something I don't understand, it's the data's not available in the report. Gosh, guys, come on. So if we look at these things
So for example, yeah.
For example, Demco. 1,085. Where, where is that going to show up in this rollup report? You see what I'm saying? I can't connect the dots.
Okay, so let's start with the categories to try and connect the dots. I mean, we can give you the raw data. I think Mary's point, though, I, my problem with that is just that it feels like we're getting very micro when you don't even understand the categories yet, right? So like, wouldn't you want to understand that?
Sorry, I'm not sure your categories are even correct. Let's see.
But what does that mean, correct? I don't understand what you mean by that. Like, what are you, what do, what do you think is actually happening? That's what I feel like, I feel like there's something, there's an assumption about something that might really be secretly happening, that
I think the assumption is that we don't know, we don't know what you've got in your QuickBooks. That's the assumption. And let's solve that by doing what I ask. Can someone please commit to giving us a raw data file minus PII? Can someone just throw a date out there? If you can't live by it, come back and adjust expectations, but we're going in circles here.
Okay, so Mary and I will look at, like, say, you know, January. How about that, Mary? Does that sound good?
Yeah.
And we'll download it together, we'll look at it, I don't know what that looks like, and then we'll see what it is, and we'll bring it to that next meeting for, for us to all look at together, and you can ask questions.
So what was the date on that? What was the date again?
Um, well, that's up to you guys. So it was supposed to be next Friday, but you were saying you might want to postpone it till that after. And if there's not PII in it, I mean, you know, then that's no big deal. I would like to see it first, just to see what it is.
Please do.
And then, um, but I, you know, I don't expect to have any more knowledge than Mary, for sure. Do you have any concerns about that, Mary?
Oh, I know there's PII in there.
Okay, well, so we'll look through and try to figure out how complicated it'll be, and maybe like a sunshine request will give you an estimate of how much time it'll take to take that out.
So you're asking, you're asking the treasurer or board member to do a sunshine request?
No, she's saying
I'm saying that that's a process we have to do if we get, if we ever, whenever we get sunshine requests that include financial data that is not already printed on a board report, then if we have to pull a specific thing, then we have to go through that to pull out confidential data before we're allowed to, to provide it. I'm not saying you have to make, you, you have asked for it, and we said we'll do a month as an example. But I said, like, maybe what we can do is that same, Mary and I will go about that the same way. We'll pull it out and we'll look through. And if it looks like it's going to take a really, really long time, because there's tons of data, then we can just let you know before the meeting, like, hey, this is going to take longer than we thought. But that if you do postpone it, if everybody can do the 30th, is that the, no, sorry, I'm a month. The 20th, 25th, then we, uh, Mary can try to work on the categories and have that ready, and then have that file, and maybe we can all look at it together to see if that's what you're looking at, because part of what I want to know, too, before we hand it over to you, is what is, I don't quite understand what you're looking for, and I think you're going to have to explain that to us, right? So I want you to be able to look at those categories like we're looking here and, and explain to us what, because I I feel like there might be something more helpful we could give you that we don't understand you're actually asking for.
No, I, what I said is what I want, and that's what I need, and I think I explained why I want it. Um, I think the 25th works for me.
Okay.
And look, I appreciate you guys being patient um, with me explaining this in, in
Yeah, and, and us too, John, I, we're really not trying to be, I know Mary said the can do. We're not trying to be at all antagonistic, I think, I, we just don't quite understand where the disconnect is, because I did hear Mary say in the last meeting, you know, that obviously we're in budget, we've never had a bad audit, like, the, the library is a, a, so far, at least, a very compliant, fiscally responsible entity. Um, so I don't oppose you getting more information. Um, I think that more information is always good, but sometimes if it's just like a big dump like that, I worry that it starts a lot of rabbit holes that are not what you're looking for necessarily, if that makes sense. Like, just even the idea that that we might have it budgeted in the wrong category. I don't even know what that means. Like, what are the right categories? Like, I think it is in the, I don't know.
And, and I guess our future is our time is so precious, and I get that, I know you guys understand that, you guys have a lot going on, too. But here in the past few months, we've done quite a bit of work that has never been looked at, because we've realized, or the boards realized, oh, that's not even what we wanted. Here's what we wanted. If we would have talked it out before, we would have known that.
And so I, to that end, I appreciate you having this, even though it was, you know, probably just because we're all tired a little, uh, you know, difficult, covered, we're not in person, so it's harder to look each other in the eye and understand that we're coming from a place of good faith and interest here, but so we, what we will do is do like the one month, look through it, make sure that that's what you're looking for. And then if you want more of those, and it wasn't too hard to read, by then we'll know if, how, how long it takes to, you know, take out whatever we need to take out. And then you can play around and see what you're suggesting. Um, do you, if you wanted us to move forward on researching software, that would be something we could put in a meeting agenda to discuss.
I think that's premature. I, we're all busy, we don't need to research finance software.
Okay, well, that would, I mean, we would start with the county and
But I do think that Mary needs an updated version of QuickBooks. We shouldn't be operating in software that is
And at least right now, that
This has worked perfectly, and we've actually brought it up with two different, two different directors, executive directors, and based on priorities, because this has always worked for what we've needed, they've put that money to other things, which has been fine, because it's working just fine.
And I really am not trying to push it off to the new person, but I really think some of this stuff is something that a new ED, those are people that are hired who hopefully have experience, like Renee did, in managing big organizations and large budgets, right? That's part of the credentials that you guys are looking for. I mean, they may come in and somehow be able to better understand what you're asking for as well than, than we can, if that makes sense.
Tori, let's, let's be crystal clear here. The budget is the board's responsibility, not the ED's, right? You, you as the interim and the new ED will propose a budget. We approve it. We're responsible for it.
Yes, and that budget this year has been approved. It is set this year.
Yeah, and I only approved it because Mary Miller so kindly said, you can modify it if you need to, and I thought, okay. Hopefully, we don't have to do that.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, but yes, the, but the, the board of trustees, especially just two trustees, not as a board, like you guys have to act as a group, right? And that's why it has to be something that the whole group sees, not just like one or two trustees. And so like that, you do, that's why you approve kind of the, the big picture, here's how much we want you to spend. Here are the big picture categories, and then you task your director with coming to you with a proposal for how that looks, like, that's what and they get into the minutia and et cetera, et cetera, and come and say, be, this is in line with the priorities that you have set. And so that's why I'm saying, like, there are certain minutia, you can say, I want you to prioritize, you know, um, as long as the director agrees and doesn't have good reasons to present to us why not, like an online QuickBooks program, I want you to look at, but, you know, transparency software, try to figure out, we want that to be a priority, see if you can fit it into the, the larger approved budget. Um, because, I mean, those things you can't do in these committees, really, like, you would have to do as a whole group, like, if you're going to start going as a board, item by item, you can do that, but it would have to be like a week long meeting all the time, going through item by item with your director. Um, and that would be something that the whole board has to do. Does that make sense?
What you're saying makes sense. It, I, I just want to get, circle back to what I asked for, and I hope we can get to it.
Sure, so we're working at one month, we'll bring that, we'll try to come up with a list of categories based on the budget categories, and then to give you some more explanations, so so Mary can kind of know a little better what's in what category. Again, John, I really encourage, although Mary Miller doesn't have much time, I would love for you to work with her to set up a day to come in and ask some of these questions about the categories directly. That is something that we've done with all the previous treasurers.
Yeah, we just can pull something with you, Mary Miller, and and if it doesn't work on that particular day, um, you can, uh, ask for a different day. Um, I, I don't want to take a lot of your time. I understand QuickBooks, I understand database, I understand data very, very well. Um, so, um, what I'm asking for in the, in the raw data file will, will help me immensely to see where we're at right now. And that's, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I think we're at 5:09. Was there anything else we wanted to talk about?
Are we for sure then, good to go on April 25th?
It is okay with me, Mary Miller, is it okay with you?
Yes, it's fine with me.
From four to six, and how about you, Mary?
Yeah, it works with me. I just want to make sure that we
Okay, so I will, um, tentatively, I didn't upload an agenda, but I'll put it, um, I probably can from this meeting, if you want, John, I can just put, you know, continued discussion and, um, review of QuickBooks download and categories or something like that, if you want.
Those two things will probably take us an hour anyway, because then we'll we'll get into the difficulties of, you know, some things have multiple categories. We'll get into all the data exceptions and things.
Sure. Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Okay, yeah, no, I think it's good. Thank you so much for your time, you guys. We really appreciate it. Hope everybody has a good weekend, and we will definitely see you next week for, uh, for some discussion about who your new candidates are. It's exciting.